Good evening and welcome everyone to the September 9, 2004 Prose Commission Special Meeting. The Prose Commission is conducting this meeting from City Council Chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. Secretary Vickers, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Pinkstaff?
Here.
Commissioner Oller?
Here.
Commissioner Meyer?
Here.
Commissioner Garland?
Here.
Vice Chair Cook?
Here.
And Chair Moran.
Here. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, a public comment will be received during the commission's consideration of the item. As some attendees may be participating in their first Prose Commission meeting, I want to welcome everybody and talk briefly about the public comment process. Consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks during the consideration item. And with that, we are moving on to the consent calendar. Take it away.
Sorry, consent calendar. We just want to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry, we didn't approve the minutes. You got up too fast. We're going to approve the minutes of the prose regular meeting of June 3, 2024. May I have a motion?
Can I make a comment before I make a motion?
Yes, please.
In the, in the minutes, the election of Chair and Vice Chair was noted, but not the results. Would it be appropriate to add the results to that before we approve it?
We'll go back and revisit and make note of it as a follow-up for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, you can have the commission approve the minutes with that addition if you'd like.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes with the addition of the results of the commission and vice chair?
I move to approve the amended minutes.
Any second.
I'll second the motion.
Secretary Vickers?
Roll call. Commissioner Pinkstaff?
Here.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Oller?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Garland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cook?
Yes.
And Chair Moran?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for standing there very patiently. We are now going to move on the agenda for the commission consideration, the commission's staff report. Mr. Sefin.
Thank you Chair. Members of the commission for the record, Kevin Sefin, Director of Arts and Recreation. With me tonight, I have some members of our design team, Jocelyn Lawrence Barrish from Nolan Tam Architects, Gina Chavez from RRM Landscape Design, and some of the Arts and Recreation staff and Public Works staff to answer any questions that you might have. Headline, this is an exciting time for us at the Heather Farm Community Center Aquatic Center project. For 50 years, 50 years, these facilities have served the community well, and it's past time to be doing something about this. For the past 15, one, five years, this has been a priority for the council, for the community, to do something new for the community at Heather Farm. Only for the past five years, with the start of the Your Parks, Your Future project, did momentum really start. And then two years ago, with the passage of measure, oh, we really had the money to do something in this realm. And so this is an important time for all of us, and so your input tonight is going to be critical as we move forward in this process. So that's the headline. Why are we here tonight? Meeting purpose. If you recall, back in January and February, the commission talked broadly about this project. You talked about the site plan, you talked about the building, you talked about the pool, you talked about landscaping. You gave us some good feedback. I'll share that in a little bit. And we took that and we made some changes and improvements to the design. We're now at the design development stage, and you're going to be focused tonight on a few things. This was in your staff report. You'll hear about the project's site plan that's been updated. You'll hear about the landscaping plan and the planting palette, the recreational pool play structure, and then the exterior building materials palette. And so we don't know everything we need to know about this project. You live here, you recreate here, you were involved in these facilities, and so your input tonight is going to be very helpful to us as we move forward to the City Council. And so we're really looking forward to hearing what you have to say. So what's happening tonight? Staff will present, and the design team will present on the design development presentation package. We'll take your questions after each section. So it'll be a little slide that says questions. And then we'll take public comment after our presentation is over, and we'll come back to you for your comments and feedback for us. So I'm going to give the overview and some backgrounds, and not all of you were here in January and February, and so I'll give a little bit more background there. The project design team will talk about the design development package, which will describe the things that I talked about that we're looking for from you. And then I'll talk about next steps, and we'll come back to you for questions and feedback. So with that, what's the purpose of this project at Heather Farm Park? Three, this was approved by the City Council, replacing the aging aquatic facility in the community center with a combined new facility at Heather Farm Park. One. Two, replacing the three pools that are currently at the Clark Swim Center with two pools, a 50-meter pool and a family recreational pool at the new site. And then the location is identified by the council as the site of the existing community center. So that's all direction we got several years ago from the council. We entered into principles for the building and principles for the pools. And so I won't read all these, but essentially create a visual asset for Heather Farm Park, support our existing programs, and provide opportunities for potential future growth in our programs. Preserve the views into the park from the facility. So both view of the facility and views from the facility to the park. So those are things related to the building. Aquatics, a balance, a balance of competitive and recreational programming that take place in the pools. Similarly to the building, provide opportunities to satisfy the existing programs and potentially provide space for new programs. Maximize that pool deck space to support the big activities that take place there a couple of times a year, three times a year. And then right-size our support spaces, which are inadequate at this time. Timeline. We started Your Parks, Your Future, I said five years ago, no, six years ago, 2018, with a very comprehensive program analysis. Some of you were involved in that intimately. We then, in 2021, started the conceptual planning for the facilities, focusing on Heather Farm Park. You know, we looked at the potential for doing things, improvements at Shadlands, potentially at Civic Park, but we focused on Heather Farm Park. And so the combined facility was termed by council to be the number one priority. So the design process started in 2023, running through April of next year, and then construction is slated to start in the summer roughly of next year through 2027. So that's a timeline of where we've been, where we're going. So when we last saw you, we were involved in the schematic design process, began with a number of outreach activities, community open house, pop-up events, online survey, commission meetings, yours, and design review, and then meetings with our stakeholders. So the specific meetings that we had with you, it should say we met with you in January and February. So we met with Design Review Commission in January, with you in January and February, and then we had three meetings with the council to talk about this project. So what did we learn from you in those two meetings? Again, I won't read all of this, but what was important to you? Storage, shade, flagpoles, bike racks, geese, well, mitigating geese. Geese are important to many people. I think we heard from you that we'd like to minimize their impact. Deeper water for the swim teams, moving potentially the aquatic changing room to be more accessible. And then continue our partnership with the Aquatic Foundation to reach an agreement on the design. So that's what we heard from you, and since those meetings, here's what we have done. We listened to you, we heard your feedback. And so in the design that's in front of you, and that we'll talk about this evening, we've added storage. We've added shade. We have a location for the flagpole, a location for bike racks. There's proposed to be new fencing around the man-made pond there to hopefully somewhat diminish the impact of geese on the facility. And then three things related to aquatics. The recreational pool has been expanded, the design, so it's deeper and it's longer and wider to accommodate the needs of a couple of the swim teams, the masters and the aquanuts. To do that, we removed the bulkhead. If you recall, we had an option to put a bulkhead in the 50-meter pool. We took that out of the project with council's approval to provide the funding for those changes to the rec pool. We moved the changing rooms to be closer to the front, so people see them when they first enter the building. And then we worked closely with the Aquatic Foundation to reach an agreement on that schematic design, which was ultimately approved by council in April. So a lot has happened since we last saw you, and a lot of good things. So like I said, that feedback was incorporated into the presentation we made to council. Council gave us direction in April to move forward to what we're doing today, which is the design development, which is much more intricate work that'll be presented to you in much more fleshed-out form than you saw back in January, which is schematic. So what have we done since April? We've had stakeholder meetings, which I'll summarize in a second, and we've had one public meeting with the Design Review Commission. We just had that last week. We're meeting with you tonight, then we go to council in October. So stakeholder groups. The first was with the environmental groups, which is the gardens at Heather Farm, the Mount Diablo Bird Alliance, formerly known as Audubon Society, the Open Space Foundation, and the Friends of the Creek. We also had a meeting with the aquatic groups, which is the Aquatic Foundation, which is the nonprofit group that supports the swim teams and community aquatic users. And then the four swim teams that use Clark, the aquanuts, the masters, the aquavaires, and the swim club who use it for the all-city meeting. So the results of those meetings, we got feedback again from those groups about trees, about bird-safe glass, about how to mitigate potential noise from the pool deck to other facilities such as the gardens. Power, Wi-Fi is important at the pool deck, and how do we create seating and spectator areas for the major events that take place at the swim center? In sum, the stakeholders were satisfied with the sign and the materials and had a few additional comments that you may hear this evening. So next step was to take a Design Review Commission. We did that last week. What we heard from them was general support for the design. They looked much more closely at materials and had concerns about cost and sustainability. But overall, they expressed, and you'll see this, their preference for the first palette that you'll see, which is Palette A. They liked the changes to the aquatic areas in terms of connection between the building and the public spaces, and they liked the integration between the exterior, the path, the pond, and the building. So positive support we got from DRC. So with that, I'll pause before I turn over to our design team and see if there are any questions about how we got to where we are tonight, or if there's any questions about process. Okay. I'll turn it over to Jocelyn Lawrence Barrish from Nolan Tam, who will take it from here. Jocelyn.
Good evening, Commissioners. To reiterate, I'm Jocelyn Lawrence Barrish. I'm the project manager for the project with Nolan Tam Architects. And I'm going to give you a brief overview of the, where the building sits within the park at first. So here's the larger park site plan. You can see that the new facility hugs the pond, and it's a reshaped pond. We're infilling one lobe of the pond. And then the pools are nestled to the south of that, right up against the existing All Abilities Playground. It's a little bit of a bounded site. So this idea where we're going to, you know, try to connect to all the amenities within the park, very important. We've tried to do that as successfully as we can. There are some constraints in the sense that we're limited. We're limited by the pond, we're limited by the playground, we're limited by North San Carlos Drive, and we're limited by, to the north, that's a natural creek corridor. So we have done a lot of thinking about how flexible we can be within these four bounding lines that we've got, and tried to connect all of these various amenities as thoughtfully as possible and preserve them as well as possible. Let pedestrians have clearer wayfinding between the three and four of them and the new facility itself. As Kevin mentioned, the views of the facility are important from around the park and also from the facility to the various park amenities. You'll see when we look at some perspectives later, this is a building that's viewed from almost every side within the park. There's not really a back face to this building. And part of what we've done in order to help separate the fact that we've got kind of two distinct functions, the community center types of functions and the aquatic center type of functions by noise and by activity, is we've had the noisier, more lively pools down in that south part of the site, which has a more affinity to the All Abilities Playground, and the quieter, more withdrawn activities towards the north, which is a little bit more in keeping with the kinds of activities that happen at that natural corridor. Not a 100% synergy, but as close as we can manage. To briefly let you know what's going on inside the building, although that's not the main focus of our presentation this evening, the building is separated into three main bands. And to the north, the upper two bands are largely focused on community center functions and the one to the south, aquatic center functions. So that top volume is the large assembly space. It will replace the current lakeside room. It has support services and a bar to the north of that, and there's additional multipurpose rooms, both in that bar and in the bar just below, both of them facing the pond. There are some community center administrative spaces. And then separating that from the aquatics wing is a large atrium that's meant to act as a thoroughfare, another part of the path experience, especially when you might want to get out of the heat and take a little rest. There'll be informal seating arrangements there, so it can act a little bit like a public living room. And then the aquatics wing to the south has its own multipurpose classroom, aquatics offices and storage spaces. And thank you, Commissioner Oller, we've moved the changing room to be across from the entry. It was a great suggestion. There were already folks within our camp who thought we should do that, and he gave us permission to say, no, that that has to happen, so that there's a clear entry sequence where you can check in, get to your changing rooms, and then move on to the pool decks. I'm going to pass things over actually too.
I might add that it looks like by doing that, you've helped create a sound barrier between the aquatic side, extend the sound barrier between the aquatic side and the north side.
Agreed. It was a great suggestion for many reasons. We appreciated it. I'm going to pass things over to my colleague at RRM to explain the site to you further.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Gina Chavez. I'm with RRM Design Group, and we're the landscape architects on the project. I'm quite a bit shorter than Jocelyn. All right. So this is the illustrative site plan, and as you can see, there are many features packed into the bounds of the site that Jocelyn was describing. So I'm just going to highlight a few of the elements that helped shape the design for the site. So one of the drives for our project was to create significant outdoor meeting and event space. So we did that. We included outdoor terraces and the event garden adjacent to the lakeside room. And then we also created a terrace outside of the multipurpose room, which is just south of the lakeside room. And then on the east side of the building, closer to the arrival, we have a private enclosed patio there. And all of those spaces are programmable, and they have the ability to generate revenue. So we designed them in a way that maximized those views that Kevin and Jocelyn were talking about, and also in a way that created some degree of privacy. So it's understood that people are going to be in a public park, but the way we could design the space and the planting was to create a little bit of enclosure, so some low barriers. And then there was one more thing for that. Oh, the shade, yes. So as you all know, this site is very hot. So our goal was really to maximize shade, especially on that west side of the building. And then another important area in the site plan is the new arrival. So that entry and drop-off space at the front of the building was designed to really create a beautiful sense of arrival, a place for people to gather, but also with safety and efficiency in mind. So we worked with the city traffic engineers and our civil engineering team to create a space that was safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars when they get dropped off at the site, or when they're coming into the site from different areas of the park.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Okay. So you see where it says emergency vehicle access with bollards?
Yes.
If that's at that location, how do cars get in and out? Is there like going to be a turnaround and they go back the same way they came in? Or does that need to be further down?
So that is only for the emergency vehicles. If you go north of that entry, I don't think I have a pointer here, but that's where the public comes in.
Okay, but where's the drop-off?
The drop-off is actually at the plaza area.
Correct. And then how do those cars get out? They came in their car, they dropped someone off, and now they want to leave. Is there going to be a turnaround for them, or?
Thank you. This one right here. Sorry, Commissioner. Got it? Okay. Can you all see on your screen, or would you have to turn around? Okay, sorry about that. I know this isn't comfortable for the neck. Okay. So you come in the entry here, you come down, there's accessible parking on this side, and then you follow the driveway to this drop-off area here. And then you leave and you turn right. If you need to come back into the facility, you turn left, and you either go find parking or go through the drop-off again. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, just, it looked to me like that was to, entry to a parking lot. The one, the one you're saying is actually the entrance?
The top one.
Yeah. It looked like, I assumed it was just going to the parking lot.
I see what you mean.
Right? And then people can walk, the path goes down into the, you know, back into the entry area.
Yes, so we did do numerous studies to see if we could utilize the existing entrance for two-way traffic, but it just didn't work from a safety perspective. So it had to be one-way traffic, and we're going to have to use really clever signage to make sure people understand the way to get into the facility from a vehicle. And there will be more opportunity to comment on this.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. And then one other, another element that we had to consider, due to the size of this facility, we had to have two emergency vehicle driveways. So the one that was just pointed out on the north end, and that comes all the way through to the north side of the building. And then there's also one on the south end of the park. And both of them are designed to provide very clear directional paths, but also to be integrated into the landscape and the park. So they don't look like huge 20-foot paved emergency vehicle accessways. In addition to the emergency vehicle access drives, we also needed to incorporate service and emergency access onto the pool deck. So you'll see a number of gates around the aquatics facility, and that's due to code. So we have it on all four sides of the pool area. So moving on to the planting palette, the plant palette was chosen based on a few different factors. One was, we really wanted to maintain and enhance the character of Heather Farm Park. So there are a lot of landscape styles within the park. I would say the most prominent is that it's this very picturesque setting, park-like setting with the rolling lawns and the large shade canopy trees. But that's also balanced by the natural vegetation of the reservoir to the north, as well as the Riparian Creek Corridor that Jocelyn pointed out, and the surrounding hillsides. So we wanted to bring all of that into this facility and create a balance of landscape character. We also needed to consider the uses on the site. So the type of uses really dictate the plant palette. The plants at the event garden, for example, will be very different from the plants at the aquatic center. And we're going to go into more detail on those. So trees, like we said, very important for the shade of the park. So we worked with the Public Works Department to carefully pick these species that you see up on the screen. We chose the coast live oak, which is what you see on the surrounding hillsides, and it's an evergreen tree with a very large shade canopy. So we have that throughout the park on the north and south side. But in the pool area, we had to choose a very particular tree due to the leaf litter. So we had to have larger leaves that are less likely to drop, unlike the redwood trees and the problems that they have at Clark Swim Center now because of those needles. So we chose a tree with large leaves that don't fall a lot, but have also a shade canopy year-round. And then interspersed within those shade trees, we also have these accent trees for pops of color during the spring and fall.
Do you want questions now, or all saved to the end?
Let's wait until she's done, and then we'll save them. Thanks.
Okay. So as a part of this project, due to either poor health or spatial conflicts, we are removing 120 trees, and we are replacing a total of 200 trees. So 60 within this project envelope, and then an additional 140 trees throughout Heather Farm Park. And that's happening before the project even starts, so that those trees have a chance to establish. So that will be a net increase of 80 trees from what we have today. Oops, one too many. So the way we arrange the plant palette are in three different categories, and that's what these sort of green, blue, and orange blobs signify. The green one signifies the upland character of the surrounding hillsides. The blue is more of like a riparian corridor planting palette, and then the orange is more of an urban, like durable, sturdy plant palette. So the first area we're going to look at is the arrival area, and that includes the east patio area, as well as the event garden up in the upper left-hand corner. So these plants, we're really drawing from that mixed upland community. So we have the oak trees again, we have some western red buds, and then we have some native grasses and pops of color from your perennials and your natives as well. And then in the event garden, and that's for the arrival zone as well as that entry patio. The entry patio might have a slightly more curated palette, just because it's more of a pedestrian space, and that's where you're probably going to have some photo opportunities for events. And then in the outdoor event garden, we have a little bit more of a dark green lush palette. So we're looking at our dark greens to softer grays. And then we really focused on white flowering plants, so that we don't have any clashes with color themes of a particular event. And then again, we tried to create a bit of enclosure with our plant palette here in this space, not too tall, but something to create some degree of privacy. And then the next area we're looking at is that blue area. So this is the edge along the pond, the walking path, as well as these sort of little seating areas that we have tarist along the hillside that leads up to the facility, and those also overlook the pond. So in this area, we're really imagining a more spreading native ground cover palette interspersed with grasses and landscape boulders, and again, we have our oak trees. We also have introduced the ginkgo tree, which is meant to signify something more like along the lines of a poplar tree, which you would find along a creek corridor, but due to its invasive roots, we couldn't have that tree here, so we have a bit of a look-alike. And then in our final area, which is the aquatic center, this is really our functional palette. So we need these plants to be bulletproof. So we have a hardy turf that we're working with the Public Works staff on really specifying that species. We also chose the tree here, and that's the tree that I was talking about, has limited leaf litter. That's called the Trystenia conferta. And then we have our bulletproof shrubs and grasses. All right, we'll pause there for some questions about the landscape and site plan.
Is it, it's western red bud, not eastern?
Yes, we modified that due to some of the comments we heard.
Because I was going to comment on it. Okay, good. I'm glad, that's a good choice. And then?
Can I just, for the people that don't know the difference, can you, did someone just enlighten myself and therefore everybody else? Just curious.
Sure.
What you guys were just talking about.
Yes, so the western native is a native, California red bud, and the eastern is from the east coast. So there's different properties for each. Sometimes we use like the eastern red bud, like the forest pansy, because it's easier to, I'd say, like contain in an ornamental garden. And the native red bud you'll see like on the hillsides or in a more sprawling area. So you just have to be careful which ones we specify. So we'll want to make sure that they're not like big shrubs, rather that they're trees that go upright.
So the height of these trees seems pretty high in almost all of the major trees. So for example, in the pool, those trees are, I don't know, 60 to 70 feet high? Is that?
I don't think I've seen the Trystenia get that tall. I think they probably have the potential. In urban settings, they generally don't reach that, you know, that extent. But they do take a very long, trees in general take a very long time to get to their mature. So we're really trying to maximize the shade canopy in the early years as much as possible, but really like 10, 15 years down the road.
Okay. And this is a specific question about one of the areas that has the oaks. It's the part by the drop-off area that has the seven oaks in it?
Okay, I'll go back there, to the arrival area?
Yeah. It's that plot in the middle there? My comment there was, and then there was a rendering you had, and it had, you know, the whole thing is filled with plants, like, you know, low-level plants plus the oak trees. And I'm just wondering whether, how big is that site? And if it wouldn't be nicer to have it be something that's actually accessible and not something you just look at?
Are you talking about the area where, like?
Right where you drive in, that big round, roundish, ovalish?
Okay. So where the redwood trees are today?
I don't know.
Okay.
But there's seven oak trees there right now.
Yeah, this is it. So that's where the, that's where the redwood trees are today that are in decline. So the plan is to remove those redwood trees and create the, put the oak trees there. But also, we need landscape area to do our stormwater treatment. So we were thinking that this would be an excellent location for that, because we don't really want people hanging out here. because we don't really want people hanging out here, right? Because like you said, we don't want people crossing that street. So it's meant to be more of a visual asset than a functional one.
Okay.
And an engineering asset.
I actually, I, I don't know. I, I think it'd be nice if, it could maybe be an extension in a way of like the garden at Heather Farm, where they have, it's more of a, you know, where it's labeled botanical garden. And this looks like the drawing you have later, the rendering, you can't even, you, you wouldn't even be able to walk in this, other than the paved path.
Yeah, it also is on a slope. So it's, and really, we're really trying to maximize the crosswalk area as the place for people to circulate, because as you've probably seen drop-offs with parents, it can get pretty crazy. And we don't want to encourage people crossing anywhere but the crosswalk. But we are planting a number of trees up north of the area. I noticed that a lot of people hang out in this, these areas right up there. So the people lay out blankets and hang out there, and there's a lot of native trees being planted as part of this pre-project. But we could do like little plaques saying what the trees are, so people have an educational...
If they can't go in there and it's seven of the same thing, it's probably not all that important. But, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, I, I understand what you're saying. Might be nice to show it, have the maps and the drawings actually say that it's going to be swales or whatever for purposes of stormwater.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Yeah, we're working on that right now with the civil engineering team. So we're trying to figure out how, how much of that space we can use for it, and how the slopes will work with it.
Okay. That's it for now, thank you.
Sure.
I'd also encourage my fellow commissioners to ask questions about the site plan as well, because I think we, we're on our second of four, right? So we were doing the site plan, and now the trees and moving forward. So if anyone has questions about that too, now's the time.
I can go back to that slide.
So I wanted to ask a question about the aquatic trees. Bow trees, I guess, in the short vernacular, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Bow trees?
Bow trees? I haven't heard, you know, there are many common names for trees, though. I've heard of the Brisbane.
Yeah, Brisbane box, excuse me.
Okay, yes.
Close. Anyway. So you made a comment about them not dropping their leaves.
Well, I mean, all, all trees drop leaves. It's just about minimizing that. So we're trying to find the tree that drops the least amount of leaves.
Right. And I think you've correctly figured out that it's very important not to be dropping a lot of leaves, especially small leaves, into a pool environment, because those trees are planted, a lot of them are planted inside the fence.
Right.
So they can easily blow into the pool. And so, to the extent that that is an optimal tree to avoid that, I think that's, that would be admirable. I don't know if this tree is such a thing, but I would certainly hope it is, because once you plant those, you don't have a second chance.
Right, yes.
And the other thing is, I was curious about the nature of the, the bloom and whether there are any associated seed pods and things that could fall in, in the pool area from that tree.
Yeah. So we did talk to Public Works, and they're willing to, like, they're going to have to do some maintenance, right? In the aquatic area. So blowing the leaves when they're bigger is much easier, and with the droppings, yeah. This, this tree is chosen because of the minimal droppings. But there, you know, there's always little things that come off of trees. It's just hard to avoid. So it's balancing the need for shade and the, also minimizing the maintenance.
So one other question about the trees. You have, it looks like about six of them planted on the south end of the 50-meter pool.
Oh, yes.
And in addition, there are ones planted lapping the corner of the recreational pool.
Right.
The, the views of Mount Diablo from the pool, when you're swimming, you are at ground level. And so any, anything of any height at all could be potentially blocking the view. And I'm just wondering whether there is some amount of clear shot from the pool at the pool level, the water level, I should say, of Mount Diablo in both cases.
Yeah, so you're really talking about those trees on the eastern edge here. Yeah, so we will study that, I think that's a very good comment. The mountains are sort of way up, you'll see in the, in a perspective rendering.
There was, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's a little bit exaggerated. But, yeah, so maybe there's a way that we can spread them out a little bit to create gaps, to maintain that view, but we can study that by looking at the grades.
Okay. In terms of, I, I do have another site-related issue. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time or not.
I thought so, I mean, yeah, I might as well, there, I'm getting head nods.
And it, and it concerns the, the elevation between the 50-meter and the recreational pool. There are stairs. So when you come out of the, the bath house, so to speak, to go up to, to go to the 50-meter pool, there are stairs, and there's also a ramp I see as well.
Right.
Is that driven by the site and the grading? Or is it possible to be the same surface, same level?
Yes, so it is driven by the natural grade of the site. Currently, North San Carlos Drive is considerably higher than the path that goes along the pond. So what we're doing is we're cutting a bit of the earth off of the top area, where you see the 50-meter pool, and then we're filling a bit of the area where you have the rec pool. So we're trying to balance out the grade as much as possible, essentially creating two terraces. So right now, it's going like this, and we're going to make it like this. And that's, and then that also minimizes the retaining wall heights. So if you were to come in and just cut the whole thing down to grade of the pond, you would have very large retaining walls on that east side.
It, can you, can you tell us what that difference is, what the height difference between the pool levels are?
Yes, it's approximately four feet. And another thing it helps us with are, is the use requirements that are dictated by code. So it allows us to fence off the areas when they're not in use. A little bit easier. I mean, you could fence them if they're at the same level too, but it does create that natural separation.
Okay. I mean, we, we know our current facility does, does not have steps between all three pools. There are, it's, it's one flat surface, and that's, that's very accessible. This creates some boundaries, so to speak, or which are less desirable. But I, I just, I just wanted to point it out that we're doing that, and we're doing it knowingly.
Yes, and we do have an accessible ramp there.
Can I speak to that just real quickly, Commissioner Holder? When one enters the pool deck from the changing room, there are steps that go down, right? And so to access the pools, there is a, there is a grade change from the locker room down to. So there is a ramp, right? And I'm talking about the current pool, Buck Clark Pool, right? And so to access...
Yes.
You can access that flat if you go ramp on, on the left side. But there is still that grade change. And so what we're hoping here is that when one leaves the changing room, it is flat all the way out to the pool, whichever pool they choose. So, but yes, we, if we could do it all on one flat surface, absolutely we would. For environmental reasons, cost reasons, engineering reasons, it's difficult, so.
Okay.
So we, we hear you, we agree.
Right, right. I just want it to be very obvious to everybody that what we're doing is deliberate, and it will, it will, it will be different whether you come out of the bath house and go to the rec pool, no change, right? Flat.
Right.
But it won't be if you go to the 50-meter.
Right, and then typically what we see is, most of the users who use the 50 know the pool. It doesn't make it easier necessarily that they know the pool. The new folks that are coming to the facility for the first time will be using the rec pool. And so that's, that's one advantage of this, but...
Yep.
For us, as we were designing the pool decks, there was an early request for current code and best practice for two very different pool uses like this, the competitive deeper water and the recreation pool, is to truly separate them, not just for events by a fence, but to keep them permanently fenced, so that it's easier to watch children who are running around, make sure they're not getting near, nearer to deeper water. And so as soon as we understood that there was going to have to be a permanent fence between these two pools, regardless, integrating a grade change into it actually increased that safety factor. So it helped weight, you know, the opposite of what Jeanne is talking about, about, we could have, we could have flattened it all out and dug more out and had that higher cost. But what we would be gaining would be sort of lost in the gesture of having to fence them off anyway.
Okay. And one, one other related thing about the sites of the two pools, in terms of a very specific event, which is the events that the Aqua Nuts, artistic swimmers, put on, is it their intent in the future with the new pools to use the 50-meter deep end or the recreational pool for their big events?
So for the shows, they will use the 50-meter pool, but for warm-up and practice, they will also use the rec pool.
Okay. The reason I was asking that question is the tightness of the, the deck around the rec pool compared to the deep end, where there's adequate space for grandstands and things like that.
Right.
Okay.
All the stages and bleachers. Right. Yes, we are considering all of those accessories.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, but I guess I'll start with a question regarding the bleachers. Will those be permanently stored at the facility and rolled out when needed for events? And if so, where will they be stored near the pool deck?
No, they will be brought in from off-site. Just for events.
Is that an off-site location owned by the city? Or will they have to be rented every time there is an event?
Thank you for the question. So when events are put on by the swim teams like this, they, just like today, they rent bleachers and they bring them in for their event. So they get them from a, a grandstand company who installs them at the time. So, yeah, we would expect the same thing for their, their event in 2027 beyond.
Thank you. And then I also had a question regarding the aquatic area planting palette. Obviously, it's certainly a strong consideration that all the plants and trees need to be bulletproof. But I was curious, is there going to be any additional fencing structures around these lawns? Or are they going to be open between the concrete pool deck and the lawn area? Or will there be some kind of protective planter boxes around the trees? And how will you also prevent contamination from the dirt and grass of the lawn spreading across the deck and ultimately into the pool?
Yeah, very good questions. So the, there will be some raised planters in that center spine. You'll see some little green areas between the ramps and the stairs. Those will be raised. But for the most part, the planters are just flush with the lawn areas. So creating, there will be a fence around the entire pool area, obviously. But inside that fence will be the tree lines, and then probably a low screening shrub at that same fence line, and then mostly lawn area. And the lawn is selected to be very durable, to really hold in the dirt, so that you don't have that issue of dirt spreading all over the pool deck. So that's what we're working on right now, selecting that perfect species.
Could the lawn areas be placed, replaced with artificial turf, for example, instead of real grass?
That's always an option. It's, it gets really hot. You know, like the natural lawn actually cool, is cooling. So it's a better choice for like a hangout area, where you might lay down your blanket and hang out. And then just for cost reasons also, synthetic can be very expensive.
Thank you. And then so just to clarify, there is no fence along the black outline around, for example, where you see the green spaces comparatively to the grid concrete area? There is no fence there?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's all open. That's all meant to be, be hangout space. So that's one thing we did here from the aquatic groups, that they really wanted to maximize the green space where they can spread out and use it for more flexible uses, like whether that's putting up pop-ups or laying out blankets. And then it's just nice for the rec pool area as well to create flexibility.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a large, obviously a large financial commitment for vegetation. And you're planting things, when you're planting brand-new and, you know, things haven't, you know, gotten larger, how do you, are you going to, is there plans for temporary fencing to prevent people from trampling on them or taking them?
Yeah, those are great questions that we have to consider in all of our public projects. So we are upsizing some of the plant containers at key locations to create, give them a head start on establishment. But there also is always a maintenance period where the contractor is responsible for taking care of the plants for like an extended amount of time to keep them alive until they get established. And then it's all about how you design the planter areas. You don't want them in places where people are naturally going to walk through anyway. So that's why you can see, we really have them concentrated around the edges against the fencing, especially in the pool area. But also at the arrival area, go back a couple slides. We really wanted to create large generous walkways between the planters, so that people aren't tempted to walk through the planters. And then we can also do little strategic things like placing groups of boulders at corners, which also helps people from, you know, prevents them from cutting the corners, little shortcuts. So there's little things we'll do as we're in the design, design refinement stage that will help reduce that.
And just curious, is there any sort of assessment done in terms of the amount of water required to care for all of this on a annual basis? So we can plan for that in the budgets?
Yes, so as part of the design, we have to do water calculations to make sure that we're meeting the state requirements. And we are removing quite a bit of, you know, high-water-use lawn area and replacing it with drought-tolerant planting. So we are going to be using less water than is being used today. But we also have to meet that state threshold. So we'll be using water-efficient planting and irrigation.
And just because I'm curious, or I know these are all native plants, but are there any of these native plants that are no longer, you know, we, our summers are a lot hotter, you know, like with the weather changes that have, there are things that don't work as well as they used to. Is that, does that, some of that come into the calculation as far as what you're going to use and plant?
Yes, definitely. And just to clarify, not all the plants are native. So we're selecting the plants, we're using native as much as possible, wherever it makes sense. But we really have refined our palette based on just durability due to the things that you're talking about. The heat and use and all of those things that, we design all public spaces, so we see how those are used and what plants work the best. So that's what we're basing our selections on.
Great, thanks.
So I have a question about the, the tree. So 120 trees in the vicinity will be removed, is that right?
Yes.
So you are offsetting it with planting, yes, 140, 140 trees? Or trees or plants? And where are the locations of the, the offset, the mitigation piece?
Yes, so the 140 are trees, and those are throughout Heather Farm Park. So, actually, Mike knows the exact locations, but I was just out there on Friday and saw a lot of the large areas north of the site where they're going to be planting them, and they're also planting native trees. So it's kind of throughout the park, correct?
Yeah, the, the vast majority, Mike Vickers, Public Works Manager, the vast majority of the trees, the 140 that are going to be planted outside of the project are going, the majority of them are going to be either east of the Nature Lake or west of the Nature Lake. And then there's going to be about 30 or 40 that are planted up closer to YVR, between YVR and the Ball Field 1 parking lot. So if you can envision the Nature Lake, and there's basically open area or open space, is what a lot of people refer to it as, on either side of that, other side of that pond.
Okay.
And in those areas, we'll be planting oaks, buckeyes, willows, all native that will be likely sourcing from native nurseries, local native nurseries. If you get an opportunity to get out there here sooner than later, you'll actually see that we're putting some of the infrastructure in just so we can start planting those trees, which we'll, we'll be doing for Community Service Day. just so we can start planting those trees, which we'll, we'll be doing for Community Service Day.
I have two relatively quick site plan questions. Could you just give us the 30,000-foot view of why the pond is being extended again, just for maybe people watching at home? And can give us the quick history of that?
Sure. Part of the northern portion of the building is actually sitting over where the pond currently exists. There would not be enough room for a facility of this size if we did not partially infill the pond. And in addition, taking the opportunity to redesign how the pond water hydrology works, not, that's not the main goal of the project, but to help the water quality within the pond itself be improved. The lobe that we're filling in is one that tends to collect a lot of trash and stagnate because it's a little too shallow. So the redesign should help the pond be more vibrant and healthier.
And especially in that corner, the northeast corner, I guess, if you're looking at this map, it's not the exact northeast, but you know.
Yeah, roughly.
Where the current, right. Where the, the bilge hangs out.
Yes.
And then my other question is, there's a fence now at the north end of the playground.
Right. Right here.
I guess that'd be, yeah, right. But what, what's it going to look like when it's all done, you know?
Right, so we are currently planning on extending that fence all the way around the pond as a part of this project, mostly for safety reasons, even with the fence at that strategic location. There have still been incidents apparently where folks have accidentally made it into the pond. And we, we, we've thoughtfully interwoven that fence with the fences in, that are for the rest of the facility so that it doesn't turn into a fence corridor. The, the fence at the pond is obviously of a specific height. It's not, it's not, you know, so tall that you couldn't climb over it. But it's at a height where most people will find it therefore difficult to accidentally make their way into the pond. And then the associated fences, the pool fence has to be six feet high. And then the event terraces also require terrace, excuse me, fencing in order to allow the use of alcohol on those event terraces. So there has been a, a lot of studies of what exactly that section looks like to make sure that the planting really buffers that experience. So you really feel like you're walking through a natural environment and not through an urban fenced-in environment.
And then the, I know you don't have the exact, this is what the fence will be, but in terms of what it might look between the playground and the people hanging out on the deck, are they going to wave to each other or they will just hear each other? You know, is it, we're talking about.
There's enough of a grade change that it will be just hearing each other.
Mm-hmm. But they get to hear the kids in the playground then too?
Yes. There, there'd probably be a little bit of a viewing of the top of the play structure from, from the playground amenities. So the kids who are climbing on the playground might say, hey, can we go over and play on this?
There's a big tower right there too.
Exactly.
Yeah. But so, just so I understand, so the playground is higher than the.
That's right.
Okay. Commissioner Garland, did you have some?
I, I do have a couple more questions. So you just mentioned the event terraces and they're going to be fenced. So, but are the green areas along the path around the pond, those are accessible to people on the path?
Those are publicly accessible.
Okay, so there'll be some sort of fence, maybe is it that brown line kind of that shows up on the terrace?
Yeah, so the, the, the event terrace's fence starts at where, right here, curves around up and closes the event garden.
Oh, okay, so what, that whole area would be one sort of a fence?
It might be a little bit of internal fencing. And then the middle section, right here at the building, is not fenced. And then the pool fence starts there and continues down. So that middle portion is unfenced, it's publicly accessible.
And then the area that you're, you've labeled, well, I don't know. It, I think it's the, it's a big grassy area that looks like it's a swale for.
It's a swale.
Yeah.
It's a swale.
Is that, is that contoured to the point where people aren't going to go into it?
That's right. It'll also have boulders at the edge that discourage folks. And it will, it will have, you can talk about what it'll look like.
Sure. Yeah, so it won't be like a deep pit. It's going to have gradual side slopes. So if kids do end up getting in there, it's not dangerous. You know, they don't tend to hold a lot of water, maybe in a severe winter storm, it might have some water for, for a little while. But it'll have an overflow drain in it to take that water away. But it's meant to be like a natural creek riparian area. So we're trying to design it so it doesn't look like an engineering element. It looks more like a landscape feature.
Great. And then on the other side over by the pool, so there's this area on your, on your, on your, the drawing that says event spillover area. And I remember some of the aquatic interest groups wanting, you know, when they have a big, big event, you know.
Right.
So is that, that's existing grassy area that the fence there will have a gate?
Yes, so there's a large gate there. There's a sliding gate and some swing gates to meet that code. But also it provides that spillover that you're talking about. So the tents can be set up in that open grassy area just south of the pond.
Okay, and then.
And also, I'm sorry, on this side as well, to the right of the playground. So we have this area for spillover and this area.
Oh, both?
Either side of the playground.
And, and the sign for that being a gate is the line with the squiggles, yeah?
Yeah.
And so the one up on, near San Carlos, is that the same thing?
Up here?
Yeah.
No, that's actually just for service and emergency vehicles.
Okay. But it's a gate of some kind, but it's not a pedestrian gate?
Right.
Got it, okay. Okay.
Unless it's an emergency.
Right.
Then they're, they go out all gates.
Okay. I actually think that's all, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody want to talk about materials? Ready? Yeah, okay.
I can get you to the right place. Oh, pool plants.
Right, hang on with that, Mike. Hold that for a second, thank you. All right, so we're going to take a closer look at the design of the pool deck. So this was redesigned with the help of the Walnut Creek Aquatics Foundation since you've last seen it. Specifically, what's different is this lower end, whoa, that's not what I wanted. The lower end of the recreational pool is both wider, there are more lanes and longer. It's instead of 25 yards, it's 25 meters and deeper. So the, the 25 meters allows the masters to use it for events that they host. And the deeper water allows it to be useful to the Aqua Nuts. It does make the deck area around that particular portion a little bit more constrained. But since it's deeper water, you, you might want to live in activity towards that end anyway. Still allows you to have the other features that are in that rec pool. For those of you who are not here, there's a zero-entry beach area towards the front on the north side of that pool. And then shallow water that transitions gently down past play structures that I'll be going over briefly. And then a current channel, what makes that different from a lazy river is it's not as deep. And it allows for folks to, to exercise walking against the current. And is a little bit less regulated and dangerous than a lazy river. Otherwise, it, it does look like those structures. And then connects down to a lap pool that's, as I described, 25, 25 meters and I think it's eight lanes at this point. So that leaves the 50-meter pool relatively similar to how you saw it last time. And does manage to help us accommodate all the various uses of the existing teams with, who use the Clark Swim Center. A closer look at the recreational play structures. This is a one possible option, we're still studying all the possible designs. But the, the constraints that we're working with is we are, we're looking for interactive spray and bubbler features, both on the main structure and then separate from it, maybe some that are a way for smaller children to have a little more protected play. And a dump bucket, these are apparently so popular that children will get in long lines to be there under the bucket when it lets its load go. And non-enclosed slides, they're a little less dangerous and regulated than the taller, more enclosed ones. And we're trying to incorporate the themes of the park itself. So obviously abundant nature and farms, staying away from some of the more, you know, simply neon glowing underwater kinds of themes some of these structures can have and have it be as integrated into the, the existing aesthetic of the park as possible. Questions on those two portions of our presentation?
Do you know the depth changes on the, not lazy river, but the.
Oh, the current channel?
Yeah, the current.
I don't think that it goes much deeper than, than three feet because it's meant to be chest-high on a, on an average adult.
Okay. I, I'm just curious, because you mentioned people walking against, you know, like water walking for exercise. I was just curious how high it would be.
Not too high.
Okay. And I know this is a conceptual drawing, but you know, I guess it's more of a barnyard influence than a.
Yes, I think the second one we're asking for from the companies we're working with is the more aquatic life features. And not, you know, underwater, but like frogs and lily pads, creek-like kinds of look. I think that's the next one that's coming.
I would vote more towards the aquatic creatures.
The second one, okay. Good to know.
Than the barnyard view with the roosters and chickens.
It's, might be an odd thing to have in the water, yes.
Or over your head.
Yes, yes.
I was going to make the same point, Commissioner Alerted. Does anyone else have anything to chime in with the recreational pool or anything? Okay. Thank you.
Wonderful. So then let's go to building materials. And Secretary Vickers will pass you physical versions of what we're showing on this slide. As you might know from ever having to choose finishes for perhaps your homes, nothing looks the same on the computer screen as it does in the physical reality. So we'll pass that slowly down, you're welcome to look at them. We have two palettes developed that are very similar to each other, mostly just to sort of discuss what variations we might have. The overall tone of the palette was set by community input, which asked overwhelmingly for natural material palettes, which can be a little bit cost-challenging for a public project. And so we've, we've emphasized the use of wood, especially exposed wood at the structure, which is a great way to use wood and have it last a long time. We've got quite a bit of exposed metal, especially at the pool deck where metal of the three main materials that we could use has one of the longer lifespans if it's maintained properly. And then in the, in lieu of, of natural stone that can be quite expensive, we've got both groundface masonry units that can have a very natural stone appeal with that larger aggregate like we're showing here. And also a natural-looking finish on a porcelain tile. And so the, the difference between the two palettes is essentially that palette A has a darker stone to it, a darker stone tile to it, and palette B has a lighter one. There could be use of cement plaster, which you may know also as the name of stucco, in places where we can't afford to continue to have the tile. It is a fairly expensive material, so we'll have to be judicious in the use of it. Also palette B has a greater contrast between some of the wood elements. And so we'll be toggling back and forth between the two as I show you some perspective views that show you where these materials would be used. We're still studying the extensive, the roofs, whether they can all be a metal panel roof or whether we might need to incorporate some use of asphalt shingle due to cost. There'll be other smaller accent pieces, the use of corten judiciously where it won't interact with the water. There won't be any, for instance, at the face of the building that's on the pool deck. Could be some pieces in the landscape and some of the window surrounds on the community center side. So I'll walk through the perspectives that you were able to look at in your packets. This is a view as if you were a bird looking towards the east, towards the Heather Farm Gardens and across the pond. We'll toggle just between the two palettes. You can see the real difference that you can see here is the tile and, and cement plaster that would be lighter or darker. From this view, you can see that entry sequence that Gina was discussing. You can also see the pools off to your left and how they relate to the pond, trying to give them some separation. You can also see even that north, that north fire lane has a pedestrian path right next to it. So really, all four sides of this building are visible. So finding a place to put less expensive materials is challenging. This is the view from, looking towards the east. And we've tried to preserve some of what was commented on during schematic design, how the planes of the gable roofs might echo the profile of Mount Diablo. The little ghost of it is still in there while trying to stay away from flat roofs that would be super visible from the farms across the way. And still remaining economical, there's a few areas where flat roofs will be required in order to house the mechanical units, but they'll be largely recessed and, and not as visible unless you are flying quite high as a bird. There you can see there's this nice buffer, it's a little bit of a grade change that has those plantings in between the pond fences we discussed and the fences for the facility that lets you have a, a, a green buffer to walk next to. Again, here's the difference between the two palettes, where the wood is getting a little bit more contrasting and the tile is getting darker in the two specific schemes. The view from the entry is you would be exiting from your car if you're being dropped off or as you're walking close to the facility as a pedestrian. We're trying to draw people into the openness, the transparency of that taller atrium structure. And then still using welcoming, warm, natural materials on the faces of the volumes to the right and left of it. Having those informal seating arrangements with plantings next to them to provide shade and relief from the heat. This face has probably the subtlest difference between the two palettes. We're actually reducing some of the wood elements at this face since it's, much of the wood that we're using at the pond side is to help reduce glare and screen the windows. And that's less required on this side because of solar orientation. You don't, you get less solar heat gain from a rising sun than from a setting sun. And then this is how the building would look from the pool deck. Here you can actually see this darkest difference between the two palettes. We did work quite closely with the aquatic staff to talk about how this face of the building can be able to robustly withstand water exposure, but also still feel integrated with the rest of the structure and not feel like a wholly separate, different-looking kind of building. So that it does feel like an extension of the community center. And then here's that pond face, you can see that pond fence to the right. And you can also then see the facility fence off to the left on the other side of the planting area. So that there's still quite a lot of open, openness and transparency. Views out are important to maintain as our views in. But there, it's, it is also clear where you belong as a pedestrian and where you're separated. Here you actually can start to see that wood contrast a little bit more strongly, which works best when the tile is lighter. We did receive pretty clear feedback from the DRC that that lighter tile is probably going to be a little bit blinding in the kind of environment we have down in Heather Farm. This would be the interior of the lakeside room. It's a similar to a view we showed you before, we've developed those interiors a little bit more. The idea is to have that exposed wood structure the same on the interior as it is on the exterior to sort of walk that fine line. A lot of the community input asked for something in-between contemporary and traditional where there's a more traditional form in the roof shape. Gables were, were identified as, as a preferable shape. But that the detailing, you know, the use of wide-open glazing where, window systems where you can have a huge, you know, pull back all of the large glass panels to have a large opening out to the exterior has that more modern function and feel. So that there's really kind of a blend between contemporary and traditional. This is what that atrium space would look like, a similar echo, a little bit taller. The walls wouldn't peel back quite so much since this is supposed to be a little bit of a respite from the hotter areas of the park. If you're walking around the pond and you want to get a little cool from your exertions, this could be a great place to stop. You could also be waiting for your kid while they're in a swim class or in a, an arts and rec class in one of the classrooms. And then this is what, one of those classrooms looks like, this is specifically the aquatics classroom. The pool would be visible in those rooms beyond. We'll have a lot of acoustical materials and display surfaces, movable furniture, storage and counter areas to provide a really flexible format for all different kinds of activities that could be hosted in here, from rentals to specifically programmed classes offered by the city. And I'll pause for questions there. Looks like you all got through the tray.
Great, great views there. A few questions. I think this is maybe the first time we're seeing kind of aerial views that now we can sight, we can see the sighting of solar panels?
Yes, that's right.
So I see them on the rooftops of the aquatic area and the big room in the community center. I, is it, are they also between the two pools? The cover, the shade cover?
That's a place that we're probably going to allow for a future PV installation, have the electrical infrastructure allowed for that. We're currently targeting a photovoltaic system that covers roughly 60 to 75%, depending on building use, of, of the building electrical demand based on budget. And then allowing for future expansion of that PV system to, that could eventually zero out the building electrical demand.
But what about the aquatic electrical demand?
Aquatic electrical. Aquatic electrical demand at this day and age is not a cost-effective way to heat pools. The PV field you'd need to heat those pools with electrical power would vastly outstrip the size of this site.
Okay. So you put them on the bathhouse and the...
All the good south-facing roofs.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, south-facing, but not the alternate bathhouse in the southern part?
Because the roofs tip the wrong direction, yes.
Okay, all right. The, the large community room, you showed an interior view of that, and that's a correct sunset direction, which also means there's a lot of sun in there coming through, and the shade is going to be provided by the...
There's three layers of shade. So there's, you can see from the exterior view, there's a trellis that extends out from the structure itself, which has been studied to, that specifically to try to help glare from the pond, and then also shade that event terrace. And then glare's further reduced by, you can see those are, those are actually fixed wooden sunscreens on the window system above. You can, the gable shape is actually infilled by windows, which from here might just look like siding, but then you can see from the interior view, it's actually windows. And the specific angle that those wood slots will be at is geared towards reflecting, shedding out as much evening light as possible to remove that. And then there are also operable shades at all of these windows, so that should the sun become simply too fierce, you can, you can also add that level of shade.
Okay. All right. Very helpful. Yeah. Thank you.
Can you, on, on your, the pallet, you show an accent tile. I didn't really see that anywhere. Is that...
Yeah, it's on the aquatics face, and it looks maybe a little washed out in this view, but it's, it's meant to be primarily at the places where we have exterior showers. Do you see this off, all the way to the right?
Yeah.
So it would be a little bit darker blue, and that could be picked up in a few other areas. There's a niche where you might not see it on this side. There's also a portion that's not visible in this view on the small satellite building to the south of the pool site that's also got some restrooms. It will have showers on the face of that building as well.
Okay. And then what, the windows, corten steel windows surround, and that's the little rusty piece, a little rusty strip?
Yep.
So where is that and what is the purpose of it?
So we're using a rain screen system for the, for the building exterior walls. And the way that a rain screen works, it means that you end up having a wall that's so thick that the windows are much skinnier in comparison, and you usually end up having a funny sort of extruded space you're not used to looking to, looking at, at the sills and jams and heads of the windows, especially at the exterior. And so you have to line them with something. It's a, it's a, now that I've told you that, you'll see on modern buildings, oh, that's why the windows look so deep, and they've got those funny little fins sticking out on the sides. It's to provide protection for all those, those extra layers of, of the building's exterior walls. And so they have to be lined with something. At the moment we're leaning towards corten, cost may have something to do with that. Maintenance might have things to say about that, but it will probably be a metal fin of some kind to keep all of the insulation and other building layers protected. At the aquatics face, we will definitely switch to a painted metal fin, so that there is not a rusty metal element at the aquatics pool deck side.
And so the choice of a metal like that, that would rust is for aesthetic?
It is. And, you know, and it also slightly helps with maintenance, where it can be allowed to weather naturally and doesn't cause staining and other kinds of cleaning problems. It's actually far, it, you know, once it gets that patina, it doesn't require any further work, whereas a painted metal has to be repainted over time.
Okay. And then a final question, which is kind of more general, but you touched on it a little bit with the solar question. So there's a, you know, there's a need for this to be LEED certified silver, I guess?
Equivalent, yes.
Yeah, equivalent. So can you just talk a little bit more about those features other than the solar?
Absolutely. So the main two moves that we're using to achieve the LEED points that would be required to achieve the silver level is the fact that this, the building is an all-electric facility, and that it is offset by anywhere from 60 to 75% of a PV array. And that's been modeled in a computer, in a computer model of the building rather than just guesstimated. That actually, the work to engineer and calculate that is a large chunk of some of the qualifying LEED points that are required to meet that level. Some of the other things that we're doing to help that is to have, as we talked about, low, low water use landscapes, actually views in working areas is part of a LEED checklist. So we've got great views of a park here. We're definitely making sure most of the workstations have views to the outside and are using natural daylight as much as possible. So you see, that's one of the reasons why we've got such tall, large, open window expanses that we're mitigating a little bit with the sunscreen, but it does allow, you know, instead of use of electric light, you can have natural daylight as much as possible. We've got, you can see in the view of the atrium, it's got these high clear story windows up at the top to take advantage of that natural light. And at the lakeside room, I don't think you can see it from the interior, or just slightly, you can see it. There are also these small roof monitors that also let in additional north-facing light that's nice and even and reduce the need to turn the lights on. Those are the big main moves, some smaller ones as well, to achieve that LEED level.
The roof, is there an issue with the roof or insulation or?
The, the, so when you, when you do a model of the building to establish its energetic performance, it actually determines the target of how well insulating the walls and the roofs have to be. So that's all part and parcel of having actually engineered the energy performance of the, of the, of the building itself, actually checked to see whether or not there's sufficient insulation instead of just using rules of them to establish that. Thank you.
Just one more follow-up. You started to talk about maintenance on the, on the metal. Could you talk a little bit about maintenance on the wood? Because there's a lot of wood out there.
So the strategy for the maintenance on the wood is to try to use pieces that are large enough that can weather naturally and not require resurfacing, even what looks like really thin wood sunscreens. I think this is the best view over here at the pond. Those are actually, I think, at least two-by-sixes, is that a right line, which is large enough that the plan is to stain them and clear coat them, and that will get you a very long way to not having to touch them again for quite some time. The other, all the other wood that we have exposed at the exterior is larger than that, larger members than that, that don't, don't get as worn away over time by exposure to the elements.
Thank you.
Yeah. On the pool deck, our strategy was to, here we go, keep the wood as high up as possible away from where there will be water. We still have a little wood threaded through. As we said, we wanted to make sure this still looked like it was part and parcel of the rest of the building, but then all of that exposed wood is at the eaves or higher.
I had a question about some of the information surrounding the LEED certification. So I noticed that the certification was switched to a LEED silver equivalent instead of the LEED USGBC certification. So I was just wondering if you could walk us through the reasoning behind that?
So depending on how seriously you take your LEED equivalency process, it actually gets you the same building product in the end. And because many of the portions of the USGBC's rubric for the various LEED levels have been incorporated into California code, most of the cutting-edge sustainable moves that a building can accomplish actually have to do with achieving net zero energy or carbon footprints. And so it's become less of a, less of a common thing for buildings to need to get all the way to the certification level of the LEED process, where you get a plaque. It actually costs a fair amount of time and money to go through the certification process with USGBC themselves. Some of its, the plaques themselves are actually several thousand dollars. And since we are on a cost-conscious project, we thought that the budget would best be spent on the building itself and not on, not on a very expensive plaque, if you're going to get the same performance out of the building itself. We do take the equivalency process very seriously, so we will make sure that all of the areas on the checklist have the same level of conformance to the, to the checklist goals as they would be required if we had uploaded the information to the governing body.
Thank you for the information on that. I had two more questions. One of them is regarding the roofing design. Could you go back to the roofing slide, please?
Like the aerials?
Ah, yes, this is good. Thank you. So I believe you mentioned that the flat roofs have to be kept to some degree, and I know it's been previously discussed that this, it's not cost-effective to have this be a multi-story facility. However, I was wondering if those flat areas could be purposed for additional green space, or whether this is a roof terrace or a restricted garden to improve the sustainability of the building?
That's a great question. The absolutely flat roofs, well, there's no truly flat roof. The water has to shed somewhere. But the flat roofs are currently fully taken up by mechanical equipment, so I wouldn't want to torture some plants by putting them underneath a big fan coil unit. And then the rest of the lower slope roofs are at a slope where it's actually, it's really a question of cost at this point, where we, we are right at the edge of where we need to be with our cost, and the green roofs are, there's quite a bit more structure required to hold them up. We did study the changing room as to a volume that we thought might be able to handle having a green roof, but it did ultimately come down to cost and the need for putting photovoltaics there. There's a little bit of a territory fight between photovoltaics and green roofs, since they want pretty much the same conditions. We preference the photovoltaics in this case.
Okay, thank you. And then could you please return to the slide with the common area slash lobby area? So with regards to this, I noticed there are some communal sitting spaces, but I was wondering if there are any more restricted and private areas in case somebody needs to make a call between classes or parents need to do any sort of work while they're waiting for their children?
So there's, besides just the chairs that you see pictured here, there are a couple of banquettes that have slightly raised backs that are meant to allow that one step up in privacy if someone's, for instance, wanting a small study group to be able to have a quiet conversation between folks. And then in addition, there are two rentable spaces. This is in higher level of security, that you would have to plan ahead by renting those spaces. But the two conference rooms that are also meant to serve the administrative staff of each wing, one is at this side, it's at the aquatics conference, conference room, and one is at this side, it's the community center conference room, and both of those would meant to be that swing space. Let's say you've got a book club, and you want to be able to speak out loud and not worry that you could reserve those rooms ahead of time and hold your functions there.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, maybe Director Sveen, maybe Chairman. I saw that pallet A was recommended by city staff, and I'm just wondering as to why, generally?
The, what they said specifically was that the darker, earthier tones would help ground the building into a more natural park-like presence, that the lighter tile is a little bit more civic in tone. And as I mentioned, as I was going through the views, they felt that that lighter material could offer too much glare at surface level as well. It would be a little bit too bright. And they also felt it might be a little bit dated. They felt like the darker, earthier tones were a little bit more in keeping with current design trends.
Well, it's a good thing the building won't be around in 50 years, right? So what's cool today might not be cool. Is there a difference in cost?
No.
Good answer. Okay. Anybody else? Materials. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so in wrapping up, I will talk about, there we go, next steps. We're going to take your feedback, consolidate that with what we heard from the DRC last week, present that to the council on October 15th. If the council still wants more opportunity to discuss, we may come back to them in November, but our goal is to certainly bring that to them on the 15th. And then, pending their direction, we will diligently, our architects will, get to work on the construction drawings, which the detailed drawings will go to bid with, bidding in 2025, and then construction starting in '25 through '27. So we strongly appreciate your questions. And we will now see if there are any more questions that you have, and if not, public comment, and then we'll come back to your comments.
Okay, so yeah, we'll follow the playbook. Does anyone have any questions following up to kind of a general sense before we take public comment? And we'll have a chance to ask questions after that as well, depending on who gets asked. Nope. Okay. Now we'll do public comment. I have one speaker identification card. Does anyone want to, I see someone standing up. I saw, okay, Jill. Leslie's got, nope. Okay, well, I'm going to call then in order of who gave me the card first. Rochelle, would you like to say some words? As a reminder, everyone, it's, it's two minutes, unless you're representing a larger group, in which case it's longer. Rochelle, are you speaking on your own behalf?
I'm just speaking for myself as a member of a group.
Great.
Not representing the group.
Wonderful. Thanks for being here.
Dear Prose Commissioners, my name is Rochelle Fortier, Walnut Creek resident. I'm a member of Mount Diablo Bird Alliance, but I'm representing myself. Regarding birds, thank you for putting the wood louvers, you also call them the sun screen, in the upper windows of the community center building. That reduces interior glare, but it should protect against birds flying into the windows. But if it becomes a problem, the windows could be covered with a special thin film that is see-through, but as small dots that the birds can see and thus avoid collision. The May 2025 construction date is a concern, could be in the nesting season, which is about February through June. The plan proposes about 120 trees will be removed. Will these trees be removed from February through June 2025? If so, will there be a biologist on site monitoring the trees during the removal so that an active nest is protected? Regarding trees, please do not plant the nine Princeton century genko trees. This tree has little to no wildlife value since it is a seedless male cultivar with no flowers or berries, and it's also kind of yellow-leafed very short time before the leaves fall off. In the aquatic rug zone, the tree plan shows 23 Brisbane box trees, but this tree attracts a lot of bees. It has perfumed flowers that bloom in June and July. I think it might be a bad idea to have a tree that attracts so many bees around a swimming pool area. The tree plan shows the trees planted in the lawn areas where people will be. Perhaps the landscaping design team could find appropriate California native trees instead of the ones that are these. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker? Leslie, Jill, you guys can dress, dress. Leslie? Try bending it from the top. There you go.
Okay, is it close enough to my mouth now?
Yeah, you're good. Leslie, are you, are you speaking on your own behalf or?
No, I'm speaking for the Open Space Foundation and Friends of the Creeks.
Sounds good. Thanks.
So how long have I got?
Mike's giving you the full 10 minutes.
Oh, okay, that should do. 50 years ago, the citizens of Walnut Creek passed a bond issue to buy open space. We're celebrating that 50th anniversary this year. The tradition has held up well. We still love our open space and we still love our environment. We still have a reputation for it. But one of the things that we got out of that purchase that we didn't so much expect was that there was a wildlife corridor created from the summit of Mount Diablo down to South Susun Bay, and it came down the hill through Shell Ridge, across Ignacio, across that Nine Hall Golf Course, across the land that Seven Hills Ranch to the creek, and from the creek down to the bay. It was a wonderful thing to have. There are a lot of animals that used Seven Hills Ranch before it was fenced and developed. But when we fought to preserve at least some part of Seven Hills Ranch and its environment, we lost. So here we are today. The animals are blocked. They will probably find their way into Heather Farm, and that just means that our responsibility to take care of them has increased. When we looked at where they were likely to go, we realized that they would probably come into Heather Farm because we haven't fenced it, it's public space. We, of course, took the animals' welfare into consideration strongly when we began looking at this plan. The animals that we're most concerned about are mostly small. They mostly eat plants. And therefore, it's important what kind of plants are there. There are varying degrees of native here, but it is fair to say that any small animal eating plants is likely to prefer natives because that's what is eaten for millennia past, and they don't change their habits that easily. So it matters whether things are local and how local. The palette that we looked at, I'm not going to bore you with all the plant nerd stuff about this species and that subspecies, but, you know, the species on the plant palette are roughly equally divided between native and non-native. The definition of native is broad, it includes the whole state. And this doesn't fit so well with what creatures are actually going to eat. So we're a bit concerned. We have picked out some plants that we are really not too happy with. Like Rochelle, I'm going to pick on the ginkgos. Not only do they not contribute anything to the environment, they don't grow well in this environment. They're dying. They're not growing. And I think that we could do considerably better. We have a number of suggestions. There's some other considerations like that. The box trees are an expense. Twenty years ago, when I sat in your chair, one of you, the Design Review Commission said that they had seen that the box trees above 24 inches tended to be detrimental to the plants that were in them and the plant's welfare, and they didn't do as well. So they passed a rule and said, I'm not approving anything that has more than a 24-inch box in it. There are 12, 47 box plants in this plan altogether. Twelve of them in boxes larger than 24 inches. It may be a place to save some money and maybe improve results as well. The last thing, well, let me see. I guess I have time for one more point here. The Well, let me just go on. Part of the casting pool is being removed as part of this project. And that means that it has to be mitigated for. I went down a couple of days ago, had a look at it. It's all laid out for a lot of oak trees. Oak trees are wonderful, the single best thing you can plant for the greatest variety of animals. But like man, animals don't live by bread alone. So they need some variety to support other species, and we look forward to discussing that with staff. I think that things have come together well. I congratulate everybody who has worked on this for getting us as far as we have gotten. I think we will get the rest of the way, and I hope we'll be pleased with the result. And in closing, I would like to say that I hope that our concern for the environment and our taking care of it will go on as it has for the last 50 years. And I will be shameless and plug the fact that we are having a 50th anniversary celebration. We'll be posting anecdotes and activities for the next six months or so on our website. We invite you to join us and learn more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have some comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. Leslie Hunt is a tough act to follow. I should have gone before she went. My name is Jill Dresser, and I live in Walnut Creek. I'm a garden and arts volunteer in the city. I'd like to share my thoughts on the planting palette. The proposed tree schedule currently lists 47 trees, of which 35 are non-native. That is 74% of the proposed trees are non-native. There are 20 Brisbane box, which the landscape architect calls Tristonia. They are native of Australia for the pool area. I understand they are chosen for their leaf size and how those leaves would affect the pool filters. Well, I personally don't know of any substitute native for the Brisbane box. Someone with more native plant experience than I have may know of one. I urge landscape architect to consult with colleagues and Bay Area native tree experts before settling on the Brisbane box. Thank you for changing out the eastern redbud to western redbud in the last four days. I hate ginkgo. Please, get rid of the ginkgo. They're horrible. They are everywhere in Walnut Creek. There's 50 plus of them that just got planted in the Veterans Plaza out here a year ago. Crepe myrtle is a gorgeous plant. I don't know what else you can plant besides the crepe because they are so pretty right now, but I'd like the landscape architects to see if there is something that can be planted. There is likely a good native species to use instead of these non-natives. While I find the proposed tree schedule to be in need of the most improvement, there are also many listed shrubs, grasses, and vines that can be substituted out for natives. As you know, we're in the midst of a climate crisis. The trees that are planted around this new complex are going to be around for generations to come. What is planted does matter. I urge the Pro's Commission to take bold action that asks both the city and landscape architects to go back to the drawing board, to dig deep, do research, talk to other city and landscape architect professionals to find suitable native plants so that the new Walnut Creek Aquatic and Community Center planting palette is as close to 100% native as it can be. Thank you.
I thank you for the last minute appearance here. My name is Matthew Tarlac. I'm with Mount Diablo Bird Alliance, but my comments here are my own. Well, looking at the pictures, this is really coming together. It's a pretty impressive and attractive facility. I agree with the other people who've spoken that native plantings should be a priority. And if the landscape plant could be tweaked to have more native and appropriate plants, I think that would be great. Overall, I think it's a pretty impressive thing. And as a member of the Bird Alliance, my primary concern is actually with the mitigations for this project and how it's going to affect the impact on the adjacent native natural area and the natural lake there. And let me take the opportunity to thank the design team for their receptiveness to our concerns throughout the process and some of the changes they've made to help buffer the native area, the natural area, excuse me, from the impact of the new pool center. And also, I'd like to thank Mike and Public Works for working with us on the mitigation measures in the native natural area with the tree plantings we'll be doing there. I want to call the committee the attention to. Some of those mitigation measures are going to have a very substantial impact, excuse me, on the natural lake. For example, the natural lake is going to be expanded and dredged. There are going to be plants exposed, plantings made around there. And we want to make sure that that's all done in a timely way where it minimizes the impact on nesting birds and other wildlife because that is a natural area, and we do have plants, animals that have been living there for a long time, a lot longer than we were here, and I think we should respect that. It's a real treasure we have in our community here. And I hope the commission and Public Works continue to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. And would anyone like to follow up with a question, comment, based on what we heard just now on public comment?
Beyond public comment as well, just general comments or what?
I don't think there's a rule. You know, the idea was you hear from the public and what they had to say. And if anyone germinated any questions, then please do, but don't hold back if you've got other questions.
Chair, with your indulgence, so I put on the screen the topics that we'd like your comments on. If you're not going to follow up anymore on the public comment, totally fine. And so just in order here, we're happy to receive your input feedback on each of these different categories if you'd like, or however you'd like to proceed. Just making it a little bit easier for you.
Sure, thank you. I have a question in regards to the public comment that we heard. And I'm wondering, I'll need to put anybody's spot, but if there's any general thoughts, I'm more curious as to the reasoning behind native versus non-native. And without, again, I hope I'm not throwing anybody into the deep end of the pool, so to speak, but if there's any thoughts about ginkgos, I mean, just maybe enlighten us a little bit about, in regards to the public comment that we just heard, does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense. So we are continuing to refine our plant palette based on the comments we've heard, and they provided us a plant list recently. So we're looking at all of that to see how we can incorporate more of those plants. It's a little tricky with the trees because there are limited native tree options for a public space or like a more ornamental space where, because native trees are meant to be like out in the natural environment. So that's where they work the best. So we will see if we can find any substitutes. But we have looked and I like, so we will continue looking, but I'm not completely confident on the tree aspect. But on the shrubs, perennials, grasses, then I do believe that we can incorporate more local natives.
Thank you. That's all I had. Colleen?
I just wanted to clarify, when you are selecting and refining the plant palette and consulting external groups, are these the stakeholders we've heard from today? Are these external environmental scientists and biologists? And what exactly is that process?
So we have many resources for native plants, and I think our stakeholders are amazing resources. So we know we have gardens here that we can visit, so we will be doing all of that. But then there are also just extended resources in our field that we utilize on a daily basis. So we'll be balancing both.
Thank you. Why don't we move it down the line? If anyone has feedback, questions about, you know, what Dr. Sveen put up, the site plan, play structure, landscaping, materials, et cetera, now would be the time, because this is going to go back to the city council after this.
I do have a question about the suggestion of monitoring by a certified biologist for nesting season during the treat, either the planting and or removing.
Sure. So there is an environmental study that's happening concurrently to the design process, and that will cover any tree removal. So there are always specific mitigation measures for nesting birds, and they are correct that you cannot remove trees when that is happening. So there will be, they're called studies, that will be done during that process. Yes, which will include a monitoring biologist.
This is more a question for staff, but SEAC was completed?
We have filed the notice of determination for the MND, and we are in the process of filing applications with the regulatory agencies.
So there's, the mitigated part of the MND is available for review by, I mean, for people to look at?
Yes, it's public.
Okay.
Yep. It can be found through the city's website. Anybody? Nope. I have a couple, just general thoughts, maybe I'll get the ball rolling. I'm not a big fan of the barnyard animal. I know that, I know you probably had another thing which you could have put up there. I understand that and message received. But I think that probably, just from an aesthetic point of view, I'm more in favor of a different palette, if you will, rather than cornstalks. Yes?
Can I offer, the reason, this is not the intent, what you saw in front of you at the barn, the reason that we wanted your consideration of a potential farm scene is the nature of the name of the park, right? Heather Farm Park, which is named after a horse. And so if I'm hearing the commissioners, that's all well and good, but we prefer the aquatic environment. Is that fair?
Yeah, sure. I mean, to find a aquatic environment, I guess, if I had to choose, I'd pick a lizard over a rooster, right? I know it's not up to me.
Noted.
I think there's also maybe some, I'm not a landscape architect, but, you know, the concept of the rose garden is also interesting to me. You know, I understand it's mainly for children, and they're going to be more into, you know, a cool gecko rather than, you know, some, a rose bush, if that makes sense. But I think the world is our oyster in that regard. So it's, and that's a fun thing to choose because it's going to be going for a while. And I do say that the kids do love the bucket from
Yes.
personal experience. Yep.
For sure. So maybe incorporating some elements from the park itself, like Jocelyn suggested, lily pads and frogs and that type of thing?
That's exactly what I mean. Yeah, just don't close the book on that because I think that's, it'll go a long way.
Yes.
And also, it's meaningful rather than just, you know, a, something cute, right?
Yes.
That's helpful. Thank you. Noted.
Sir, are we going to provide feedback on the four items here now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go first.
Go for it.
Okay. So I guess my main points are that I would definitely like us to try to increase the number of native species we're using. And I appreciate that you're already starting to, you know, really try to do that. And I know you have other considerations, but a balance would be good. I agree completely with the chair on the pool play structure. I actually, you know, I think I agree with palette A. I like the contrast, but I don't like the very white walls. I don't know if you can mix and match a little bit, but maybe like the darker wood accent with the lighter wood, but then the darker of the concretes and the tiles and that type of thing. Might be worth taking a look at that. And I guess I would really, I appreciate that you're working on the equivalency for the lead, and I think that's really, really important. I mean, the city has, you know, pretty ambitious sustainability goals, and I think that's a really important element. And it's also an element we should try to make sure people understand that we're attempting to do that and what that really means. And I think that even if we can't get a, like a plaque, then, you know, we can at least, we can still tell that story there. And I want to make sure, some of my questions kind of related to this, but I do want to make sure as much of that facility as possible is just sort of available to the casual person. Not, I didn't rent a room, I'm not swimming. But it's a great facility, and whether it's an outdoor space or, you know, an interior space, it just, I want it to feel like it's really a community there, and it's accessible to everyone, and not just because you're part of a class or, you know, on a swim team. So whatever elements we can do to make sure that happens. And then, yeah, I think signage is going to be really critical as we change that whole area from, you know, the kind of entrance it is now and to what it's going to be in the future. So appreciate all your efforts.
First of all, thank you all for the great work you've done, and staff as well, in getting us to where we are. It's a lot different than what we saw earlier in the year, and there are very many improvements. And I did want to thank you specifically for And I did want to thank you specifically for moving the bathhouses, adding another one, which is more the public, the people that are at the pool but not swimmers, they now have a place that they don't have to go into locker rooms, that type of thing. Very, very useful. For locating a flagpole, thank you very much, and for adding outdoor showers. I plan on using all those things. But I do want to kind of go through the four items here and say that, first of all, the updated project site plan is very well thought out. And I particularly appreciate thinking about the users, because there are a lot of public spaces where I feel like architects didn't realize that people are going to be walking from point A to point B, maybe with a roller bag, and they have to go up steps, down escalators, up elevators, and they're just trying to get from point A to point B. The point A to point B is going to be very easy in this facility, and it's going to be very useful, and it's going to contain the privacy where there are private parties, so to speak, from the public spaces. It'll be, it's going to be very well defined and very, I think a lot of thought went into it, I appreciate that. On the recreational pool play structure, I'm not going to add anything further. I think it's going to be great, whatever we end up with, and the dump, the bucket dump is going to be huge, as are the slides. And big, big steps with wet feet are going to work, so that looks, that we're heading in the right direction there. Landscape plan and planting palette, I think it's obvious from not only the public comment, which was really thoughtful, I thought. The, to reach an agreement as to the trees, specifically, the trees that we're going to use on the site, I'm not worried about the larger number of trees, which are going to be supportive of Heather Farm and that, and the other areas that we're going to increase. But the, but the trees around the structure that we're talking about, to get agreement on, it's going to take a lot more justification as to why we're recommending a particular tree. You know, our comments were probably fairly shallow, but none of us are arborists. We had, you know, limited amount of time to look, to Google things and figure out what they were, get some background on things. But when it goes to city council, obviously, the bar is going to be raised in terms of what's going to be necessary to, what you're recommending and what you ruled out and why. Because to rule out a native in favor of a non-native, it's going to, it's going to be difficult, but it can happen, so I encourage more, more work there. In terms of, finally, in terms of the exterior building material palette, I generally agree with the design review committee about choosing the darker. I'm not sure we need it quite that dark on the tile. You know, there's, there are colors in between those two that could be successful. I love the use of wood, and I hope it ages well. I'd like to see it last 50, but I won't be around for that. But overall, I wanted to say that this is a beautiful plan. It is really superb, better than anything we saw in, that any other community had, in a similar, in a similar objective of what we're trying to do here. Just fantastic at this point. I know there'll be changes. I think all the changes that are happening so far are for the better. It is very creative and practical. So, thank you.
I'd just say I'm very impressed with the design, especially with the community room. Our family and our community have been to the current community room many times. My son, who's sitting back there, had, end of the year, North Gate, cross-country banquet there. We've been to, you know, weddings and, and they've taken classes there. But looking at, just looking forward to this new facility with the sustainability measure, the energy efficiency built into it, we're just, I'm really looking forward to it. And thanks for the great work.
I definitely like a lot of the changes from the revised design development presentation package. I especially want to highlight the expansion of the recreational pool and how that has been expanded in height, width, and depth. I think this facility is really designed to service a lot of stakeholder groups within the aquatics community, including water polo, diving, artistic swimming, and speed swimming. But I do see some challenges for how the facility will host all of those programs and continue to expand so that Walnut Creek can be competitive on that front, and also bring more economic vitality to the city through aquatics and sports tourism. However, given the parameters and constraints of the size and cost, I understand that this is a very difficult issue, so I hope that is all being arbitrated properly with the aquatic stakeholder groups. So that's my only comment on that. With regards to the recreational pool play structure, I like where that vision is going. I mean, I think the other commissioners have already addressed the theme. And the only additional comment I would add on that is, I think my demographic would really like more water slides, but I understand there are regulatory issues and cost constraints around that. With regards to the landscape plan and planting palette, just to echo what I've heard from the public commentary, as well as my fellow commissioners, I would say, I really encourage you to follow environmental standards and consult with external organizations. I know you said you were working with the Open Space Foundation and other existing stakeholders with the, within the community, but I'd say also continue to utilize external resources that you have as a neutral source. And finally, with regards to the exterior building materials palette, I agree with the staff recommendation and the design review commission's recommendation for palette A, just because of the glare concerns and also cleanliness. And then, with regards to the wood, I did have one question, how often will that be treated and up kept? Because I've seen like how rain has severely damaged a pavilion that I frequently use, and it has not been the best for that structure.
Yeah, so the wood will require some limited resurfacing, probably on the order of every, roughly 15 to 20 years. And so a few, a few cycles of that through the lifetime of the building, but not on every surface. So all of the exposed wood structure at the underside of the roofs and the trellises actually should stay pretty intact. They won't get a lot of exposure from the elements. So it'll be a lot of the sunscreen elements, those will probably need it first. The ones at the interior probably won't need any, any major maintenance efforts, because they'll be far more protected from the elements. So it's really the thinner sunscreen elements, and then some of the pieces, I think there's wood columns not at the aquatic face, those columns that actually touch to the ground, those will need a little bit more resealing and resurfacing. If that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. And then my final comment regarding the facility, this goes back to, I believe Commissioner Garland brought this up, is to ensure that this really is a community-based, community center, and not only designed for paid programs, whether these are run by the city or run by foundations within the city, that it's really open access to everyone. So whether that means having a living room space for youth, or more alcoves within the atrium area for games, or even having a library of board games disposable for kids who want to use those between lessons and classes. Or installing swings that hang from the beams of the atrium. I really encourage you to add those types of fun and very youth-oriented features to make it more centered on the community.
Carlina, you are always a tough act to follow. And that's coming next. As a longtime swimmer, you know, I've swam in a lot of pools, and yeah, you had the, in regards to the palette, definitely the dark, because you've got the, you've got the reflection from the water, the sky, the cement, and then when they plaster a building white, it's pretty overwhelming. So I like the dark, even though when you're looking at the photos, I could understand why people may be watching, say, hey, white looks, shows up better, but dark definitely works better. Thank you very much for being here and accommodating all our different user groups and perspectives, and somebody who, you know, I'm from the private sector, so, you know, we're used to plowing ahead with plans. So on the privates, on the public sector, I'm working with all these different groups and people that are experts in their area, and enjoy learning from everybody who contributes. Thank you very much for that. I live in a neighborhood, we have a private lake over here called Lakewood, and I was on the board for several years. So there's always a discussion, there was always a discussion around native and natural, what is native and what is natural. But at the end of the day, it did always come down to, hey, a lot of this is not natural. Like, natural is Shell Ridge, right? And we're making unnatural changes to this, and those do require compromises. I'm definitely not an expert in, in the plant selection and all the things that go into that with wildlife and whatnot, but I have enjoyed learning about that from Leslie and the Open Space Foundation on the meetings that I've, that I've been able to attend. And if there's an opportunity for Carlina to go to those meetings, you should, on a Friday morning sometime, you should try to attend those, you'd enjoy that. And I'm glad that Brendan's going to get his dump bucket.
Well, when you put it like that, I'll put a bow around this. Thank you, everybody, very much for all the work that it's taken to get to this point, because as Director Sefin said, it really started half a generation ago. My, my points have been said by my fellow commissioners, so I'm not going to rehash everything, but I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to the city staff, thank you to the stakeholders that are here in attendance. I know that there's still some work to do, and we're going to cross that finish line, but overall, it looks amazing. I think that the public's going to be very happy with the final product. And with that, I believe that we are done with our comments. So thank you, everyone, and we're going to move on to staff reports. Doesn't appear that anybody else has a staff report, and I don't, I'm not sure if a commissioner was going to bring this up or not, but I wanted to just take a minute to remind everybody that Community Service Day is coming up on October 12th. You can go online to sign up for a number of different projects. I believe there's about 34 projects in total, and we are still seeking many volunteers, so we would appreciate the help. Thank you. Looks like Karen has one item.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Karen Heaton-Martin, program manager. I am just here to remind you and all of Walnut Creek residents that the Walnut Festival is coming back this year. It'll be February 8, sorry, September 18 through the Sunday 22nd. All information can be found on the walletfestival.org's website, and they are desperately seeking volunteers, so you can go to the website and sign up to be a volunteer as well. This will be taking place in Heather Farm Park. There will be playground and parking impacts. Those things are going up on our websites, and there will be signs posted next, this week. It's Monday. Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Nope. Okay, we're going to move on. We have a youth commissioner service acknowledgement. For those of you who may not know, this is Commissioner Meyer's last meeting with us, and she has served diligently for the last two years. So I wanted to say a couple remarks in her honor, if that's okay. Carlina, on behalf of your fellow commissioners, city staff, city council, and people of Walnut Creek, we want to say thank you for your service. You were our first youth commissioner, is that right? We, it was two years ago, and it was a pilot program. And, you know, doing this job requires a lot of thinking on your feet, you know, kind of being ready for stuff that you don't necessarily have maybe total confidence in what you're talking about, but, you know, be smart enough to figure it out along the way. And I wanted to make the point that for the two years that you specifically have been on here, from the very first day that you started, you have been operating at the highest of levels. And I want to congratulate you, and I know that my sentiments are shared by the rest of my commissioners as well. Every time you've been here, you've been prepared and thoughtful and intelligent. You ask the toughest questions of anyone here, and I just wanted to make that clear. You don't really need my praise, because I know that, you know, you've got it well in hand. I really would love to see you back here someday. I can't wait to see what you go on to do, but thank you, it's been an honor, and you'll be missed. Thanks. I think we want to take a picture, too. We're going to get a picture with the gang, and we have a going away present for you as well. Don't go anywhere just yet. Tony, or Orlando, we want to do the, yeah. Okay, I'm going to walk over here and give this to you awkwardly.
Want to take a group photo?
Do you have anything you want to say?
I guess it's speech time. I guess I'll start out by thanking the public. Thank you all so much for being here. I know usually we have a much more filled meeting chambers, for, especially for our very contentious topics, such as pickleball and the mountain biking flow trails. But it's really incredible to see such an engaged community, who cares about the future of Walnut Creek as much as the commissioners here do, and I really appreciate all of that engagement. So thank you all for showing up, for expressing your opinion, and for caring about our future. And I guess now I'll say thank you to city staff. Thank you for your tireless support and helping onboard me to this commission. I know it was probably a little bit unprecedented for me to join a commission of this nature. So I appreciate all of your help and support with that transition and your willingness to respond to all of my questions and commentaries. And I'd like to extend that to our panel of experts who come in as well and speak on these various issues. I know you, the architectural team on this project, have probably endured many questions from me, so I appreciate your continued willingness to respond to those as well. So, thank you. And I found it very informative and informational, so I'm glad we were able to have that dialogue. And most of all, I'd like to thank my commissioners. Thank you for welcoming me to this commission. Robert, I know he's not here, but he was chair at the time that I joined this commission, and without his approval, there would not have been a youth seat on the commission. And that actually happened on several of the city commissions, a youth seat was not approved. So thank you to him, if he's watching this, for creating that opportunity. Sharon, I'm sorry we didn't get to work together longer, but I'm excited to see what you continue to do on this commission. And to my four other remaining commissioners who have been here for the long haul, since the beginning, thank you so much. I really learned a lot from all of you, especially your leadership, your inquisitiveness, and how much you care about the city of Walnut Creek as citizens, and also how much you care about youth perspective. So I really appreciate that, and I've learned a lot from your example, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to get a quick, we're going to do the, your own picture first. Should we adjourn first, or should we? All right. Well, and then, thank you, in that regard, this concludes the September 9th, 2024 Pro Commission Special Meeting, and we're adjourned until October 7th, 2024. until October 7th, 2024, scheduled meeting. Thank you for coming.